Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the special meeting of the Architectural Review Board, January 18th, 2022. The time is 7:40 PM. Of the call of order, we have Ray and Catherine and Rick Schultz, Tom Planner. And now we're going to go into a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we're going to move into pending application referrals, SCP 2021-15, 395 Monroe Turnpike, Industrial IB1, Special Exception Permit Application for Dunkin' Donuts Restaurant Located at 395 Monroe Turnpike. Gregory L. and Roy E. Steiner, owners, Spathby Auckland Associates, Inc., representative. Okay, floor's yours.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for taking the time to hear our our application that we put in front of you to erect the Dunkin' Donuts on the Steiners property.
We have Commissioner Davina here too. We have three commissioners. Now, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And we'd like to reassure you that this is a going to be a family operated Dunkin' Donuts. We own all those in the town. And I'd like to take the time to answer any questions or concerns that you might have on this. We feel it's just a relocation of the one right up the road, about 200 yards up the road. This is going to have a drive-through. The existing store does not. And the way that the learnings from the last two years have taught us that our customers are asking for more convenience in their life. And this is one of those situations where we think that the ability to have a nice long drive-through on this piece of property with lights will benefit all those that use our stores. So if you have any questions, I have a team of people here that can help. We've been working on this honestly for a while. It's about a year of progress, a year in the making. And we hope you're as excited about it as we are.
So, Mr.?
Thank you.
Did you want to go, Ray, first?
Okay, question. Where are the mechanicals located?
Hi, guys. This is Eric with Aronian Associates. We're the architects working on the Dunkin' Donuts. So the mechanical units are going to be located on the roof. There's a small portion of flat roof on the drive-through side. If you've got the exterior elevations, that's going to be the east elevation above the drive-through window.
East, east, east. You're east, where would you be?
And if I can add, they're going to be screened. They're going to be screens. You see a fence above the drive-through window. There's like a white vinyl fence up there.
I do. I see it. They're going to be behind that?
Correct, correct.
They're going to be behind, between that and the roof?
Yep, yeah, it'll just be a small area. Usually will fit two units in there, and they'll be screened behind that.
Nice. So we'll see. Isn't that like McDonald's where I can still see it?
No, they're putting it up.
He tells me this for a year now.
Oh, Ray, did you want to comment on the nice dumpster enclosure?
Nice dumpster enclosure. That's on all four sides, right? Dumpster, hello?
The dumpster sits against retaining wall, so you'll see two sides of it at very least.
And it's going to look as pretty as the diagram on those two sides?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Nick. That's what I'm interested in. Thank you.
Catherine, Davina, any questions? Catherine's still here.
Trying to get myself on mute. Yes, I would like to ask a couple of questions. I appreciate the photos, but I'm wondering, based on the drawings, what is the actual color of the building going to be? Is it going to match the red brick? Complement? I had a little difficulty. You know, we can't always tell by the printouts.
Red brick? There's no red brick?
No. The other buildings are all red bricks. The whole shopping center is red brick.
Yeah, but this is 300 yards away from it.
Isn't it in front of the building? Isn't it in the front of the parking lot?
It's right next to the traffic light, Kathy. It's right next to the traffic light.
Right.
Across the street from McDonald's.
Right, so when you drive up... Okay, so am I incorrect in that this is not going to go in the front of Village Square?
Way in front of Village Square. If you go to the traffic light and stop on your exit, put out your right arm, you're going to be aimed at the drive-in window.
That's what I'm saying. So it's sharing, it's being constructed in the parking lot where Village Square shops are?
That is correct.
Okay, so my question is, can you describe to me what the color of the new Dunkin' Donuts building will be? And will it complement the red brick? That's my question.
Hi, Kathy. I can answer your question, if you can hear me okay. So the proposed color scheme for the Dunkin' Donuts is there are three principal colors that we've got going on here and one accent color. So we're using a white for like the main, you see behind the Dunkin signage areas. There's Sherwin-Williams Gauntlet Gray, which is like the body of our building. And then we have a charcoal colored water table that goes along with it. And then the last area that's kind of an accent, and all of these colors, I should preface, from Dunkin brand. But the last area that has an accent is kind of like a wood tone color. So again, all reflecting the current Dunkin brand's image. But I do believe that they will look good against the red brick of the plaza. Proposed materials are all Hardy board, James Hardy Fibersmith board siding for the building.
Okay, and hold on, I did have another question. Will the landscaping, as you're facing the front of the Dunkin' Donuts building, will the landscaping go just about to the driveway where the traffic light is?
Yes, it will extend that far. The property goes almost to the driveway. Correct.
That'll be a magnificent improvement. And then I have another question. Let somebody else ask a couple of questions while I leaf through my papers. Hold on one second. Nobody else has any questions?
Any other commissioner comments?
I think Davina might be trying to say something, but we can't hear her. Davina, is your volume on?
Yeah, you're muted. You need to unmute yourself.
Well, she's trying to figure that out. Have you spoken with planning and zoning about the DD sign, the signage in general, just the signage? Do they have any issues with the signs?
No, not with the new regulations that we have. But you raise a good point. Nick, can you talk about the stacking and the overall circulation?
Well, sure. The overall circulation is a typical drive-through. Stacking provides for at least eight cars, which is zoning reg. And what else would you like to know about stacking?
Well, that issue will come up because, Nick, as you know, McDonald's, they have the one lane that branches off to two. It's during the peak demands, Nick. And you can't get more than eight cars at once. And the commission, the commission is going to ask you, how will you accommodate the excess of eight cars if that should arise? And how will you regulate that?
Well, the eight cars are just shown on the site plan there for illustrative purposes. You can accommodate more than eight, I believe, in that configuration. But certainly, if it gets up to 15 or so, it will back out into the exit.
And that's what the commission is trying to avoid. As you know, McDonald's, it came out onto Route 111. That has since changed with the two menu boards now. We just had an issue with that single aisle. And some of the patrons were cheating and going into the aisle and then going to the second menu. That's not the situation here. But the commission at the public hearing is going to say, how will you accommodate 10, 12, 15, 16 cars through peak demands if that should happen?
Hi, this is Alex, just chiming in, one of the owners as well, Michael. One thing to specify as well is a little bit different than McDonald's is our drive-through times and our service times are a lot faster, obviously, it being more of a coffee shop than a restaurant in preparation times. We've also done quite a bit since the onset of COVID and obviously since the last two years to expedite a lot of things through the use of technology with previous status boards, with on-the-go via the app now that's available on the phone, and actually reducing those lead times and the ability for people to really move through the line much quicker. Obviously, our average ticket is much lower than something like a McDonald's where someone might come in and just get, you know, a prepared donut and a coffee versus, you know, fries and a meal and things like that. So obviously, I'm not saying we don't have issues with this traffic on occasion and buildup. But we've done a tremendous job of alleviating a lot of that through technology and our service times.
Yeah, Alex, you raise a good point. Can you explain to the board how the app works with a customer and how a regular customer coming into order from the street?
Sure. Yeah, so we have an app. It's been around for five or six years now. Obviously, as things have changed and technologies progressed, it's gotten pretty user-friendly. So basically, what happens is you go on, it notifies where you are or locates where you are. It gives you the closest Dunkin' Donuts. You can actually place an order there. From the minute you place the order, it gets projected onto the screens in the back of the line in the restaurant. And you can actually choose if you want to pick it up in the store or in the drive-through. So if you choose to pick it up in the store, you can obviously pull up, go right in, and it's sitting waiting for you. It's all paid for. You just grab it and go. What happens a lot of times, to your point with stacking and any sort of high-volume or high-traffic times, is some people who know the area, which in this case they do, would say, you know what, I don't even want to sit in the drive-through line. I'm going to place the order, pull into a spot for 10 seconds, run in, grab my order, run out, and be on my way. There are people who obviously do it in the drive-through. What would happen is you pull up to the speaker. It would understand that you're there placing up an order. It's already all paid for. It's already been prepared because once you place the order on the phone, our crew members begin making the order. So it alleviates any sort of additional orders times at the board, payment times at the window. So really, you're just saying, hey, I'm here to pick up my order. You get to the window and you grab it and you go. So a lot of those things have really sped up our service times. And it really has changed customer behavior because for people who say, you know, I really, I don't want to wait, you know, a minute, a minute and a half, or two minutes in a drive-through line. It's a beautiful sunny day, or, you know, for any reason, I don't mind getting out of the car quickly. They'll run in and actually be in and out faster than someone maybe even that decided to wait in a three, four-car stack at the time. So it's changed a bit of buyer behavior. But for the most part, our customers are very driven on getting in and getting out quickly, right? There's certain restaurants, certain other coffee shops, where people have the behavior of just sticking around and hanging out. We've never really been that type of place. People, you know, we service a lot of blue collar people who are just trying to get to work, trying to get to kids' games, trying to get kids to school, things like that. So we really pride ourselves on service times.
And Alex, can you share with the board what percentage of the customers are using the drive-through versus the walk-in? McDonald's shared with the commission recently, it's really, you know, it's going past 80%. What are you seeing for percentage going in and ordering from the window?
Yeah, we're not quite there yet, 80% wise. We're anywhere between 65 and 70%. But again, you know, the store we have currently in the town, right, you know, a couple hundred feet away, isn't a drive-through. So it'll be interesting to see how people's behavior changes a bit. One reason we did put seats in this location because a lot of other new businesses are really catering to drive-through is because we do have a cluster of our customers in the area that really enjoy coming in, seeing the faces, sitting down, meeting up, and having their coffee together. We're not quite at 80%, but again, whereas McDonald's is probably more of a sit-down, have dinner with the kids and kind of make it a bit of an experience. We're really kind of a grab-and-go business. You know, catering to people who are on the go, going to work, traveling, going to other things. So typically, our customers are en route somewhere else and are just making a quick stop. And it's a little bit of a different customer experience.
How many seats are there for dining in?
It looks like 14. On the plan that's submitted, it's 14.
And it looks to me, this has nothing to do with ARB, but from my information only, it looks to me like this is a very large facility. Are they preparing food here to go to other Dunkin' Donutses? I mean, it looks really big, the back end, not the front end, but the back end looks... Are they all that big?
No, I can tell you, this is standard-sized Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, honestly, the seats, I count them again, there's 16. A lot of the stores are up to 20. We've, you know, kind of removed that. And the one thing that I do want to just piggyback before we get off it is what Alex said, is that this store as well has the ability to, if you're in the line and you're stuck in the line and it's not moving for whatever reason, there is the ability to pull out of the line and you can exit the queue without a problem, as the site plan shows. And the other thing is that the new stores today are having a pull-ahead window. If there's a problem, you have the ability to pull the car forward up to the next window, like McDonald's has as well, to try to alleviate if there's a pinch point at the window. So, you know, those are two items to take, you know, let's say something happens and you're like, forget it, I'm stuck, I'm stuck in a sign. No, you're not. You could just, you know, easily just pull out to your right and you can exit the line without a problem.
That's good. That's good.
You have any outdoor dining?
No, this, we do not know.
You have six parking places outdoors on the, it looks like the north side. If you have eight cars that want to park, where are you going to put them?
There's more than eight spaces on the north side of the building.
There's six, on my diagram.
There's an existing parking lot to the very north.
Yes, there is. You're absolutely correct. How did the people get from that parking lot to your door where the six parking spaces are? You've got beautiful landscaping there and no cut-through. Are you planning on putting a cut-through so that people can walk from that particular location to your door?
There is a crosswalk that connects the existing parking with the restaurant.
It doesn't show in your diagram where I'm looking.
If you look at sheet S1, which is the right side.
Okay. I'm going to park over here. How do I walk in here? Okay, go ahead, Nick. How do I cut through the bushes to get there?
I don't follow you.
Hi, this is Greg Steiner.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Yes.
I think you're getting, we're getting mistaken between west and north. Nick is referring to the six to 12, eight or 12 spots right by the main entrance where you enter the building.
I'm sorry, I want to go to the other one between that and the the
The additional
The six are
Those are really meant for the urgent care. Those are additional spots for the urgent care building. The requirement for the parking spaces for Dunkin' Donuts is basically the six or eight that's alongside the building and the ones by the front entrance way.
Okay. Yeah, I missed the ones on the front entrance way. That's why I was going for the urgent care and trying to walk through from the urgent care to your side door there.
No, we're trying to keep the urgent care to give them a little bit more parking than what they have now, so that they don't walk through.
Yeah. Yeah, what's going to happen is people are going to park there anyway and go right through your bushes to get to that side door. It's going to be beat up. People are stupid.
I have a follow-up question on the the drive-through component.
Okay.
Please. When McDonald's was experiencing issues, the manager sent out a staff person with the radio, with, you know, ability to talk to internal people to guide the people that were impacting the circulation. Is, can Dunkin' Donuts do that? Because this is going to be asked on Thursday's public hearing. In the event there's a problem with stacking?
Yes.
Do you have the ability to send out a staff person?
Yes.
To correct it? Because that's what the commission is going to want to hear. That helped out with McDonald's tremendously.
Yeah, the headphones are probably the same as McDonald's. They have the ability to communicate amongst themselves like a walkie-talkie in that regards. The new technology is going to be similar, that is being launched, is similar to what Chick-fil-A does. If we get to the point where we have to do that, we can also use tablets to take orders past the speaker box if it gets to that point.
Yeah, I noticed that at Chick-fil-A. So these are the questions. We're kind of doing a test run before Thursday's meeting, so it's good that you have all these answers.
Sure, yes. Again, most of these QSRs share the same type of technology, yes.
And McDonald's is improving. It took a learning curve because most of the customers are local people. Route 111 is more local, 25 is more transient.
Okay, you know, as Al mentioned, you know, we have the store pretty close with the volumes. We can probably guess more or less how many customers we could be serving in this location by adding a drive-through, you know. And with the number that are in Monroe currently, as you guys know pretty well, I mean, it's not, it's not the first store. We have four other ones there that service the town. So, you know, this is more about being convenient for the customer, you know, as you know.
Yeah, once again, not to, you know, not to repeat myself, it's during those peak demands. And, you know, the commission is going to want assurance that you'll be prepared. And it sounds like we will be, just like McDonald's. McDonald's went through a learning curve. And they're correcting it.
I appreciate that. We'll work to get whatever we, you know, to make it work right. I promise you that.
I did take a couple of minutes to look to see what the what the current designs are of many of the Dunkin' Donutses. And I'm telling you, I was very disappointed until I got to see what you presented because it is definitely much more compatible with what we've been trying to do in Monroe than most of your very modern, you know, the things that are in California or in Arizona. I mean, this is much more compatible. I'm very happy to see the roof lines. You did a nice job.
That's thanks to Eric and Nick. The engineers did a nice job here. And we're happy with the way this has come out as well. And I thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Because I think you would have gotten a harder time from us had you presented something that was more discordant with everything else that we've got in town.
I think the big thing is we already operate there. We understand kind of what the requests and what the town is looking for, and we try to really just fit into that as opposed to coming in guns blazing with something that completely is, you know, square pegging around whole kind of thing. So we appreciate that.
Thank you for that.
Kathy, you raise a good point. The fast food restaurant industry is changing dramatically. You saw it with Panera Bread. And things are more contemporary architecturally now. So this was nice to see. They modeled this after a Massachusetts facility.
Yes.
It's exactly what Monroe likes to look at.
Not all of our developers are quite as cooperative or understanding.
Architecture is changing dramatically for the new generation.
Hi, this is Davina Rodriguez. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. No, my question was also about parking, especially since the urgent care is there. There's the karate. There's a lot of different stores compared to where your current location is. So it does sound like you have a good plan for that. So that's good. And then my other question is, have you considered solar panels for the roof and for energy supply?
Tell you honestly, we have not.
Thank you.
To that point though, Davina, Mike, just to chime in, one thing we try to do, Davina, obviously around the whole green mentality, is when we buy energy, there's opportunities for us to buy through solar and things like that, that we've done with brokers on different occasions. Typically, with the solar panels, it hasn't candidly made a lot of sense unless you kind of rent roofs and do certain things with some of these larger companies that kind of come in and overhaul the building and then they want certain, you know, is it facing the right way? Is the roof flat? So it's been a little bit more complicated. I think we'll get there candidly. But I think that, you know, a lot of the stuff that we as a brand do as it pertains to certain efficiencies with, you know, the new air conditioners and things like that, and making sure that the building is really put through the tests and the paces with a lot of the previous designs, as I'm sure, as I think Kathy mentioned, to make sure that we are super efficient, buying all the latest technology to make sure of that with, you know, the new thermostats regulating temperatures in the building and sensors and things like that. So we do, we do have a focus and an eye on those types of things. Right now, solar hasn't made the most sense for our footprint. But it's definitely something we keep an eye on. Here in Massachusetts, we actually have, if you can believe it, a 50,000-square-foot donut manufacturing facility that runs completely on solar. So it's something that we focus on. We're definitely kind of keeping our ear down, ready for when that kind of fits. But as of right now, it hasn't made a ton of sense for us, but we do focus our different things on other areas. So for example, right, like we shut our toasters off at a certain time during the day to make sure that they're not constantly running. Ovens the same. We have special thermostats in certain instances that'll allow you to kind of throttle the temperature based on, so you're not constantly pushing cold air or heat. So there are things we do inside the restaurant that kind of bring that kind of green focus. We just haven't gotten other solar panels yet because it hasn't, we haven't really found the fit for them yet.
Well, I appreciate you guys looking into other ways to be more efficient. But just something to keep in mind, because where that location is, you really don't have that many big trees or anything blocking you versus your current location where you do have more coverage. So just something to consider. But I'm happy you're looking at other ways to be efficient too.
And Alex, can you tell the board members the hours of deliveries and dumpster removal times?
So they vary. Candidly, the donuts are delivered around opening time. So donuts are typically made off-site at a shared kitchen. Those get delivered kind of very early in the morning, right around times of opening. We bake other items in stores. The main deliveries for products that we make in store and other things that we sell in store, that changes quite a bit, but it's flexible in regards to servicing at off-peak hours so that, you know, the trucks aren't getting in the way of customers trying to get their coffee. So those either happen early or later in the day so that they don't conflict with any customers. Which Manny, I don't know, I see you're on the call. Do you have any specifics around current delivery times that would probably just mirror those? Do you have any specifics around current delivery times that would probably just mirror those?
Well, the donut delivery is coming in before 3:00, 3:00 AM. And the distribution center usually is about 8:00 or 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning in that particular location in Monroe. If it becomes a problem, then we can request a different hour and see how that goes.
What are the hours of operation?
5:20 to 9:00 right now, 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. You can see it's plenty of light.
This was a good precursor to Thursday's public hearing.
Perfect.
Just trying to, trying to get you ready. And, you know, the board members like to ask questions that are relevant too, so. So it sounds like the board is ready to direct me to write a favorable recommendation. So I'll have that hopefully by tomorrow. And I'll send you a copy, you all a copy and to the commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Time I appreciate it.
Good job. Nicely done. Good job.
With all the technical difficulties.
Have a good evening all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you too. Thank you for your time.
Board, board members, we need to approve the November 9th minutes. So I need a motion in a second.
I motion to approve the minutes as published.
Second, second.
Okay, 3, 2, 0. Okay, as you heard, this matter will go before the planning and zoning this Thursday. We anticipate the hearing being opened and closed unless there's some questions from the public that we're not anticipating. And we'll see where it goes. But I think generally speaking, everyone's pretty excited. Most patrons like the drive-through capabilities now. And this site does allow them to, to do that. Architecturally speaking, as you know, it's a very traditional design. And that goes a, a long way.
You got to ask Kathy. That's the important thing.
No, it's an attractive New England looking building.
Well, we're, we're trying, you know? When I looked, when I looked online to see what they all look like, I said, oh, no. And then I saw this one from, I don't know, maybe it was Massachusetts, one from someplace. I said, oh, that looks like what we should have. And then when I looked at all the pictures, I said, all right, we're getting what we want. So that's good.
But as I indicated, everyone, you know, things are changing dramatically. They're more contemporary. McDonald's is real contemporary, you know, new construction I'm talking about.
I understand.
And then you go to different parts of the country, which I've had the ability. Texas doesn't have pretty good, does not have good zoning, I can tell you. But you go to Arizona and it's top of the line, you know, Sedona. But they try to fit it into the Red Rocks, you know?
Oh, yes.
But they have very strict zoning. But generally speaking, everything's becoming more contemporary again, you know? So you're going to be faced with that.
On the other hand, you know, these are, this is New England and, you know, what works in Arizona doesn't necessarily work here.
Yeah. It, it's just that we have to encourage that because our zoning is very generic. It's not, it doesn't, it's not village district type where you have a lot of teeth. Unfortunately, the Panera Bread, you saw how that changed dramatically. And you did work on McDonald's, but that was a retrofit. That was not new construction. I mean, 25 years, you spent a lot of time in that building. It never came to fruition.
Kathy and I want to know when the shutters are going up on the
He promised me in fall and then winter came and they're doing much better. And they indicated we can budget for it. Remember I told you that? The enrollment really got hit hard with COVID. And they said, please, can we wait till the enrollment? Enrollment's back to where they are, so. And we're going to get the black shutters.
Okay.
And McDonald's, they met with the commission on the traffic issues. They've already agreed to add the screening like Dunkin' Donuts is doing. It's very simple to effect.
Brilliant.
So now that we're in a better frame of mind with, with the, with the drive-through. Because the drive-through was, was getting pretty funky there for a while, but it got resolved. McDonald's, yeah. You have one lane going in and people are cheating and going out because there's no barrier going into the, the drive-through to get, to get around, to go to the second menu board.
Yes.
You, there are one lane to go to both menu boards. So some of them were cheating, going out to the main aisle and then going to the second one.
I'll, I'll tell you where, there, there are two driveway issues that I see. One is when you're heading up 111, going to Town Hall, heading into the library, that's stupid. Whoever designed that wouldn't let you make a left turn. Everybody does it anyway, place. So that, that should be addressed. And the other one is when you enter heading towards Town Hall on 111 and you want to head into Goodwill. I don't think they could have made that drive, that entrance driveway, that pork chop entry thing. They could not have made it any narrower.
Yeah, it's too, yeah, it's too narrow. It's
It's too narrow. It's just, I don't know how that ever got through.
Yeah, they want you to slow down, but it, it just doesn't work.
No, it doesn't work.
You know, it's part of a traffic calming design, slow things down because you can't rush through it. Because when it's wide open, as you know, people dart out and the state doesn't like that.
It doesn't need to be wide open, but it just needs to give you enough room. It's easy to pass it because it's, it, it's just not good.
No, Kathy, you're right. There's an appropriate width. And then there's an inappropriate width, and that's inappropriate. You're right.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know how you go about changing that now.
It's hard to do that now.
Impossible.
Unless they commit for a major addition, then that's not going to happen. Okay.
I did notice the lights going down to the Amazon parking lot that are along the driveway. That was a nice surprise.
Yeah, sidewalks and lights, yeah.
Yeah.
And remember, that's a private road. People forget about that.
Yeah, I had forgotten that the lights are going to go in. It looks good.
That was because of the subdivision. The subdivision precipitated sidewalks on both sides. And, and the lights, because you will get Swiss Army. The people walk there, they, they do the trail that runs by there.
I know.
And when you get to development on 25, they will walk down because it's going to be the Shaysall property, Kathy, you're right. We'll have retail there because you can't have residential there because it's contaminated. But there will be retail and Swiss Army employees will walk. So that was, that was a good design.
All right. Well, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
All right.
See you next month.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.